I've called this special city council meeting workshop is called order. Uh, we do have a quorum. Um, we have public comments, anything, nope, nobody's side of the deal?
I just want to say one thing right quick. Chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Man.
What were you gonna say?
I think he's probably gonna compliment or something.
Favorite part of my day so far, yeah.
Hey, thanks for the job y'all did out on the hay bales after all that.
Oh, it was a mess.
Oh, I, I just talked to one of the county guys after and I guess you got it. He was after till nine last night and I guess you all stayed around for quite a while.
Yeah.
It looked like an old truck didn't look very good today.
That was the owner's son too. Well, it was before he burnt the truck. He's a DED.
Not anymore.
Yes, sir.
Oh, wow.
All right, number two, uh, discussion regarding EDA application for sanitary sewer line.
We are gonna bring up Cody Mosley and, and pitch an idea that I know that former councils have discussed which has to do with, um, an industrial park. So this is, goes back a very long time. I was looking at even strategic plans from oh two, Kay, you might know best, about two thousand and two that talked about doing an industrial park. So we're trying to breathe some life, um, back into that project. So Cody, take us away.
Well, I'm passing around a, um, aerial view of the city's eighty acres that's actually owned by, um, I believe it's a GIDA. And so, um, that gives you kind of a, uh, reference to where this site is located. What we're looking to do is, um, fill out an EDA application, uh, for this site to get a, uh, to get sewer available at the site, uh, with the intentions later on of developing an industrial park. And so, um, I'm gonna pass around a, um, copy of a grant application that has been completed, uh, by the city of Norman and, uh, that's kind of, um, pretty much the same packet that we will need to fill out for this process as well. And, um...
We will need to, or he will?
Cody, a joint effort, a joint effort with ACOG, um, if you wanna talk a little bit about ACOG's role?
Okay, ACOG's role is partnering with the city, getting all the information and then submitting it. They will be the, uh, ones who actually submit it for, uh, the city of Guthrie. They just received a, uh, economic development, um, certification for a cog district and so, uh, they will be the ones submitting on our behalf. And so, uh, even though it is a city of Guthrie site and a city of Guthrie application, they will actually be the ones who submit the project for, uh, proposal as well. And so, um, we've taken a look at the land and, um, like I said, the application's going around, um, this, that's kind of the information that they will be looking for. Um, like I said, the, um, project is for sewer to an industrial park area. Some, um, communities that have done this, of course, you're seeing Norman's right, Norman's application right now. Um, I'm gonna read off a little bit about, um, the city of Claremore's project, uh, that they had completed. Um, project had, uh, three distinct goals, uh, develop a, um, transmodal facility in the certified Claremore-Morth North Industrial Park, uh, provide road and rail access, uh, connect Claremore to Tulsa. All of these are economic development projects that, um, do increase the wealth in that community. Uh, Claremore decided that, you know, the transportation mode, um, was kind of a growth mechanism that they wanted to use. We believe that getting sewer to the opposite side of thirty-five, um, will enhance the city's, um, tax capacity. And so, um, is there anything that I missed that?
Are you finished?
Um...
I got some.
Pretty much, okay.
Tell us a little bit about, um, when's the deadline?
Uh, the deadline is gonna be the middle of September, September thirteenth, to be exact.
And if y'all can recall back to when the, uh, the Armed Forces was here and I gave the number of nine hundred and twenty thousand, now that's a couple of year old numbers, but so if y'all understand, the cost of this project is nine hundred and twenty thousand kind of bare minimum, that's getting those sewer across, that's not talking about the development of buildings, et cetera, improvements on the land. EDA, um, is a, uh, grant matching organization, not a, uh, not a full grant, but what's great about the EDAs, their ability, uh, our matching for that, the, the four hundred and, or, uh, do math for it, whatever, um, thank you, for that amount of money, the, the money that we would have to put up would, would be the cost of the, the appraised value of the property. What we're hoping is to get an appraisal of that eighty acres that will pay for some of that. Then any improvements that you make on the facility are also a match. So they'll take a match of land, in-kind service and improvements. We feel that we have the potential of reaching that whole amount based upon those three criteria being land, improvements and in-kind, whether it be dirt work, whatever it might be. The way industrial parks, there's a hundred ways to skin this cap, but one way that you could do is the city continues to own the land and own the buildings, build the buildings to suit within the letters of intent. That cost of that building then is our matching and then you do a thirty-year lease, a long-term lease for that facility. So there's a way to get through this process with that, without capital cost and, and that's our whole goal. Uh, if y'all can remember, my hesitation with the United States, uh, with the Armed Forces was that we would not be able to get the grant at all. Uh, and so that's where, if this gives us an opportunity, so we've seen industrial parks be granted recently, uh, Midwest City had an industrial park granted through, uh, ACOG.
Heritage received another one.
Heritage, so we know that this has worked for communities, um, with, I should say, I don't wanna say merely, but we would do an appraisal on a property, a true appraisal. Uh, we have a, did county do a, there, uh, anyway, we bought the property for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars originally, uh, so we would get it appraised for first thing, get that done, we'd have to pay for that appraisal. Uh, there's some preliminary engineering that's really been done and a brief environmental study that would need to be done that we can do and that's part of that application process. So...
They also wanna see letters of intent, businesses that are, um, interested in coming to Guthrie and so we're working on that right now with the help of LCEDC as well. Uh, city of Guthrie, uh, we believe that we have one, uh, LCEDC potentially has another one and we're going out and, you know, talking to businesses that we have heard from, uh, in the past potentially about coming back and we're kind, we're kind of keeping our eyes and ears open for any RFPs that roll across our desk from Oklahoma City Partnership and, um, you know, we're kinda hitting the ground hard trying to recruit these people, saying this is the project that we're looking to do, um, if this is available, would you be interested in moving to Guthrie? And so those letter of, letters of intent are crucial as well.
What, what does this do as far as the reserve and military? Are we talking to them again too?
Here's, here's what we wanted from you guys today, it's really a head nod to say, should, should we now spend, I mean Cody's gonna spend some time on this, I mean this takes, you know, we have to do the, the appraisal, do you want us to, to keep moving forward? And at some point we'll come to the council for, um, well, we don't have to, but we can, where EDA likes for us to come to you and say that approve that we're, we're going forward with the packet. Right now, we've got a September deadline and here it is, July, we gotta hustle.
Yeah.
Um, and so really just a head nod that you want us moving forward. If you want us to go and approach the military, again, we, we take your direction, we believe this is a more viable, as we're going through the budget, I can tell you right now, we don't have those kind of funds in capital.
I've got a question, this might be, sound silly, but I know that we own the property, but is it officially considered Guthrie?
It was annexed at that time.
It's actually annexed, okay.
Now, just south of it is not, so there's the talk about the, there's a new facility, uh, building at thirty-five and thirty-three. So that property is not within the city limits and I may remind you that it's not within our water district, um, as well.
That's the one across the street.
Yeah, it's gonna be on the, um, yes, yes, thirty-five, thirty-three southeast. So, um, what this will provide is a sewer line, you know, that cost is, cause it's, it's under thirty-five, um, so that costs, you know, an ability to then maybe tap on over, but you know, we haven't gotten that far into thinking, but this will, um, definitely enhance that, that eighty acres, you know, when you, when you look at it as Cody and I and I know Kay looks at, when we talk about economic development within the United States, they said the fastest growing corridor is in between, you know, Austin and Kansas City and thirty-five is hopping and guys, we're, we're right there on it and with it, with an exit. I mean, that, that's what's critical and we watch at what's going on around us and, um, we believe that we're, we're primed for an industrial park.
Who are we trying to attract? What, what size built, built, I mean, businesses?
I, um...
You know, if we wanted to be...
Fifty employees.
If we wanted to be home to several, if we wanted this industrial park to be home of, you know, to several different businesses, maybe, um, little bits at a time, um, I, I don't really know, um, that there's a cap on the number of jobs that we could bring in with this. Um, you know, certainly space is limited even though we have a great sized site, um...
Like when you, whenever you talk to developers, I mean, there, you know, it could range from as, um, well, one of the companies was ten, um, okay, so you have the ten size, but then you have the fifty size and, and if we did it right, we build a suit and, and could hopefully make shell buildings that will fluctuate over time so that you don't have, you know...
I think my question really, and I didn't present it correctly, but are we looking at one giant industry?
No.
We're looking at several small industries for small businesses.
And it came out chime in, that's what I think that, you know, we, we're gonna...
There's plenty of room out there.
There's room.
Or probably ten or twelve.
Okay, that, that would be... I'm not sure that our housing market could hold, you know, it's kinda, it's this chicken egg constant fight of, you know, can you attract fifty people today? We don't have a housing.
Right. Somebody would be a happy camper.
I mean, and so then of course you hope that then the development comes, but whenever you piece it and, and then provide, um, many, many different types of jobs. I like the fluctuation within, within types of jobs and, and levels of jobs.
I think that we would try and position ourselves to be very flexible with what we could bring in as well. That way, we...
And the holdup out there always has been facilities too there, sewer, whatever.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Uh, for the council, I think, uh, we should go ahead and let them pursue this and get going because that is it, the one major holdup is the sewer line. Everybody agree?
Agree.
You have four nods to continue.
Wonderful. It'll be a busy...
Get it done.
Like it...
Yesterday. Uh, thank you Cody. Number three, discussion regarding demolition process of dilapidated structure.
Our favorite, our, no. Um, I, I heard in the council retreat, uh, we have some new members on council and, and really Renee just brushed off a, a form, a, a former document that she has done and I wanted Renee to give the opportunity to, as we bring y'all a budget as well, that y'all know what we're doing to dilapidated structures. I, I hear comments, well, why don't we do this? How does the lien work? What, what are we doing with these structures? So I wanted Renee to, to take a few minutes to, to discuss with you demolition of unoccupied dilapidated structures.
Thank you. As we go through, if you have any questions, let me know, it'll be new for most of you. John, you could probably rattle this one off with me or instead of, but anyway. Um, Aaron, if you could flip to the first slide, please. You'll notice I have a magic clicker, it's, it's Aaron in my ear. Uh, next one, very good. Um, I'm gonna hand out the slides, they're up here on the PowerPoint or exactly what you have in your hand, so, um, you can, can follow that way. Um, there are, uh, basically three different, uh, categories that the, the city uses, uh, as their guidelines for defining what, um, dilapidated structures and, and demolition is. And we'll go through those, I'll show you some examples of dilapidated houses and then talk about the procedures that we go through and the guidelines and so on. Within the, the city, what, what we look for within our ordinance, which by the way was passed in fairly recently in comparison to some of our other ordinances, back in two thousand and nine, so that's practically brand new, you know. Um, what we look at is, is the, uh, structure, uh, clean and secure? Does it create a blighting effect on the neighborhood? Does it bring the, the quality of the neighborhood down? Um, and then, uh, does it have any adverse effect on public health, safety and, and welfare? And that's what, what we look at. Um, within the Oklahoma State Code, uh, they define it in, in two separate ways. One, it's a structure that's, uh, decayed to such a point that it's a hazard to the public and that decay can come from either, um, an, an accident, whether it be a, a natural disaster of some variety like the flood that we would have here in town or, or a tornado, or even neglect, you know? We have quite a number of absentee owners in town that, you know, right off their property just don't care and nature again takes it, takes its course. Um, let's see, thank you very much, Aaron. Um, on the next, and, and then the, the next one also is that, um, the state defines it as a, a house that's totally uninhabitable, that there's just no way that a, a person could live in that. Okay, Aaron, if we could go to the next slide? We have six slides here that talk, well, not talk, they show, um, different houses that meet these criteria. The first one, this is a location over on, on South Capitol, um, it's obviously unsecure, it doesn't look like there's a door there at all. I mean, that's a welcome invitation to kids.
It's a reper, isn't it?
Oh, hey, thanks.
Handyman dream.
Uh, handyman dream with a lot of time and, and a bunch of money.
And a bunch of money, yeah.
Yeah, but in this case, you know, that attracts urban environments, uh, little kids go in and wanna play and then fall into, yeah.
Fall into it.
Fall into it, exactly. It's, it's, uh, going through major states of decay, obviously needs, needs repairs. Um, the next one, that's obviously an abandoned house, it's blighted and what we're talking about here is it does nothing positive for the neighborhood. You know, a, a house that adds to the neighborhood and hence improves the, the, uh, quality of the neighborhood and the property value of the neighborhood adds something, this doesn't add anything. I must commend that the grass is, is mowed, you know? That's about the only positive thing that, that could be said about this one. Um, and the next one, Aaron, thank you. Uh, this one isn't clean, safe, uh, nor secure, it's obviously something that we would classify as, as dangerous, uh, to the public safety, again, attracting critters and, uh, children to come play and people to camp in it overnight. It's not something that's, that's good for the neighborhood. This one, uh, over on Vilas, bear in mind, these are all down, okay? This one on, on Vilas, you take a look at the dormer, it's probably sitting in that person's front, front living room. Uh, it's certainly not secure and again, um, blighting effect. This is an excellent example of what we look for at the very first and that's holes in the roof. Um, the first action, once you get a roof that has been, uh, deteriorated so that there's holes, it allows the weather to come in, you have rain and snow, once the weather gets into the house, then it compromises everything else, you lose the integrity of the rafters, of the ceiling, goes down, uh, the joists, the columns and soon your walls and your floor are, are totally deteriorated. So, once the roof is shot, the house is, is, uh, fairly close to being totally dilapidated. And this next one shows a, a, a good, uh, picture of how the blighting effect can affect the neighborhood. You see two pictures here, the one on the upper left is the house that, that's dilapidated, the subject property. The one on the right is, is the subject property, which is just across the street, how would you like to wake up every morning and, you know, open your door to a house that, uh, you know, has vines growing all over it and the roof is sagging and so on. Those kinds of, those kinds of, of, um, homes have a major negative impact on the entire neighborhood.
And you're unlikely to buy that house too.
Right.
The nice house, just because you see the...
Right. And if, and if the person across the street who has the nice house needed to sell his home, the new buyers come in, they take a look at what their view would be across the street and the value goes down.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, those are things that the city should be concerned about is how do we at least maintain, but preferably increase people's property values, you know? That's what, what we all look for.
I know that house.
Do you know that house?
I know a lot of these houses, yeah.
Yeah, I was knocking doors, I saw a lot of them.
There's, there's a lot, a lot that needs to...
They're all here and off back in that direction, they're pretty bad shit.
Right. And it's, it's not cheap, um, tearing down a house can cost anywhere between four to ten thousand dollars. Oftentimes we go into a home and it, it looks horrible on the end, on the outside, but you go inside and you find that the basement is full of stuff or there was a hoarder in there. The insides, you know, may be terrible and that takes more time, more money to haul away all, all of that. So we, we try to aid for the four thousand dollar houses than, than the ten. This, uh, list, the, the standards that, that we look by are, are that we look at, uh, when we're identifying houses that need to be, um, torn down because of their dilapidated condition. But in essence, you can, you can consider two, two major ideas as we, we look at these houses. Number one, do they create a blighting effect on the neighborhood? And we have an awful lot of those. And number two, um, does this house in some way create an adverse effect on the public health, welfare and safety? If it affects the public in a negative way, um, then it would be considered a dilapidated structure.
So, so, real quick, not knowing how much it's gonna cost until you actually get it started, find out what's in there, we shoot for the four thousand dollar mark, but if it goes up higher, that just depletes the funds a little bit quicker as far as...
Absolutely.
Okay, so we just have to do it one at a time to see how many can go through in the process, see how bad it is.
Right. We go out for bids when, when we as the city, um, have to do it and so we get bids on each, you know, each one, we take a look.
So it's not the city people doing it, it's, it's contractors doing it?
Right, because oftentimes we are, are faced with issues where, you know, there may be some kind of toxic...
Hazmat, yeah.
Yeah, that, you mean a hazmat thing, or there may be asbestos in there or lead and that kind. So in each case, it has to be assessed for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sure looks good.
Yeah, no, can't, can't do that. Um, the procedures that we go through, again, we revised all this back in two thousand and nine and we really tried to give special consideration to the fact that this not is, but was somebody's home. There's probably a lot of deep meaning there, um, and, and since demolition is a permanent issue, we wanna make sure that, that people have been contacted, they've had the opportunity to remove whatever they wanna remove, um, and that we don't get a call on the next day after the house has been demoed and somebody says, wait a second, so. But again, we wanna make sure that we're taking care of the neighbors as well, you know? They don't wanna deal with that blighting situation. What we do, the, um, the building inspector and the code enforcer go out and, um, take a look at buildings. We do have a, a list that we're working, working through on, uh, buildings that have been identified. Uh, the owner of the property, we go through to, to find the owner, um, of that with the, uh, the help from the assessor's office. We notify them via certified mail, we also post a placard near the entrance to the building that, you know, it's a big thing, red letters, you know, said, says not fit for human habitation, that type of thing, to make sure that if we can't get ahold of them, they see the placard and we keep, keep trying to, to get a, ahold of them. In all cases so far, we have, so that's, that's a positive. The owner then has thirty days to respond back to the city, either say, yes, I'm gonna tear this building down, or no, I don't wanna tear it down, um, or I don't have the money to tear it down, or, or, or whatever. If they're gonna tear it down, great, that's, that's the end of our situation, uh, with them, we just make sure that it comes down within that, that thirty day.
You give them the timeframe to do that, right?
Yeah, if, if you wanna do it, you don't have a year, sorry. The neighbors next door are getting upset.
What kind of, uh, incentive do you give them to tear down their house versus the city doing it?
Well, it's, we'll go through the options then, you either tear down or, 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 and then I'll let you go send it.
But then we, then we give you the bill, right?
Yeah, yeah. What happens if, if they say, I don't, I don't wanna tear it down, then yes, we'll go through the bid process, we'll identify, um, you know, the, um, vendor that would do that, we then tear it down, we do add our administrative, uh, costs on top of that, it becomes a lien on the property, but we file it as a special assessment, so it is due with the next year's taxes, it's not due when the house is sold, it's due then. And that's a, a full lien for the full amount.
So how often do we get that?
How often do we?
Do we get the money from them?
Um, well, we've recently started on that, the file, the liens have been filed, some of them are, are, probably will be due here this next, uh, next cycle.
Which it seems like to me, if you have a certain amount of money and if you can actually get the money from these folks, then really you haven't really spent the money, you can go and recycle that money again and recycle it again, you don't have to come up with new mine items every year, cause really you have a recycled amount of money.
Right, but if we do them, we don't know we're getting that money until we actually get the lien against them and they pay it.
Right.
And that may take up to a year.
Yeah, and a lot of times people do realize the, the impact of having that lien and then all of a sudden they're gonna be getting a four or a ten thousand dollar bill and so they'll, you know, get the, the family members together and tear it down so that the, the land is clear. In some situations where they, uh, no longer have any interest in it, you know, say Aunt Martha lived there, she's passed away, all the relatives live in Wisconsin and they have no intention on moving back to, to Guthrie. Um, what we try to do is put them in touch, say, with Neighborhood Solutions or something like that and have them donate it to Neighborhood Solutions, they then get a tax write-off for that donation of property, since Neighborhood Solutions is a nonprofit organization. Neighborhood Solutions then accepts that, gives them their receipt, they can then contact, um, a contractor to whatever Neighborhood Solution does and basically revitalize that piece of property with a contractor who will knock the property down, build an infill house, then they can sell it to, um, someone who needs it.
And in that case, weird, the city's not out anything?
Not, zip.
Okay.
And we've done that a couple of times.
Neighborhood Solutions may have a new house that they can put up via whatever.
Right, and that's happened a few times.
Okay.
So, you know, to me, that's a win-win because we don't, we don't get involved except for saying, you know, here's, here's the form, please call, please call down.
On the budget side of it, and you'll see this eventually, um, it's thirty, it was thirty thousand dollars this past year for total abatement. We didn't have that in the budget broken out because when I use the word abatement, that's also whatever we send out, someone to go weed eat, someone to go, not demolish a building. So there's a thirty thousand dollar abatement and I forgot what, what we're sitting at right now. What, the way it works in our world though, it's always at the end, about twenty thousand left? It's always at the end of the, our fiscal year, so our growing season was just now and this is whenever, you know, during the winter, we're not spending much on, on abatement at all. And then this has been where now you'll start to see, um, our, our contractors out mowing properties and then that's how that money depletes. So if you remember about two, three months ago, we brought to council three properties, um, and what we do is we come in, we're asking your permission basically to, to proceed.
Notification.
Um, right, and, and so y'all approved those and on those three particulars, it's kinda interesting, one of the property owners owned another dilapidated facility that's on the list, so he went ahead and tore down both. Yay, win. Um, and then we hope that they remove the debris, that's often a, a conversation as they tear it down, but then we've got now a pile of a house and, and so...
It's a whole nother...
There's a whole nother conversation.
Yeah.
Um, so, sometimes, so, um, those three, I, I think I can safely say those have been completed, so now what we're doing is, uh, looking at what abatements we have now and maybe we'll put in another three in this fiscal year to, to bring forward. So you're right, we don't ever really know how much it is till the bid is done and...
One at a time.
And whether or not they tell us they're gonna do it or not, but it is limited funds. I mean, you know, if you had a hundred thousand there, sure, we could do this all day long, but the, the issue is, comes down to some manpower, we have one code enforcement officer that's in charge of dilapidated and weedy lots and, you know, so all those things.
Again, I'll, I'll try not to over dwell on this, but the owner has done thirty days to get back to us. The owner can request a hearing, um, kind of a one-on-one if, if need be, um, with the city manager. It's at that point also that we come to you just so that, that you're aware of what's, for example, going on in your ward, that this person has come forward, uh, because we've sent them a letter that says their house needs, needs to come down and by way of information, we're, we're giving you, um, that, that piece. And at that time, then the owner can also, um, appeal through you. And, you know, what we're looking for is, you know, give us a timeline, um, what are you gonna do? We do need it down in, in thirty days.
Get it done, yeah.
You know, we, in, in no way wanna play the, the hard, hardcore city is here to take your, no, no. Um, we're trying to protect everybody in the city in that case. Um, let's see, uh, next slide, Aaron. This is the, the last one here. Now, our procedure in going for this, again, the owner is responsible for the cause, we only do, um, the demolitions on houses that are vacant, we would never, never tear down a home where, um, someone is utilizing that building as their home, but we'll, yeah, that's not gonna happen. Um, we've already talked about soliciting bids and the lien process, process and again, we file a lien with the city, uh, I'm sorry, with the county, uh, for the, uh, the expenses on, like an add more basis. on, like an ad more basis.
What do we do to a property where the owner just happens to be living there, and they love their house, and their house is like falling in on it, that we would think that nobody in their right mind would live there? I've seen some people do that in this town.
It's, it's a little frightening.
So what do you, what do we do in that situation?
If, if they're still living there, this, I mean, that's, that's not gonna be a demolition situation.
Right, right, right.
We would, um, go after it like a minimum maintenance, uh, type issue, and.
Is it a fine?
Oh, yeah, yeah. With that, with that kind of situation, they'd say, you know, here's your, here's your notification, you have ten days to make arrangements. And what we do is, is talk to them about, you know, let's develop a, a schedule for when you can get, um, someone here to help you, you know, a contractor.
If there's children involved, it escalates to another situation as well.
Right, that becomes a DH, a DHS issue. And a lot of what we do, especially within the code enforcement, it, it's not just dealing with the hard numbers or the, or the ordinance itself, but actually, it does get into finding out, why is this happening? Is this person in such a bad state that they, they don't realize their self out there? And we've come up against that, and so, you know, we'll call the health department, we'll call Health and Human Services, and try to get people to, to cancel them. And oftentimes, unfortunately, the, the other people will say, you know, ten days has passed, why isn't this taken care of? Well, you know, sometimes these people are, are in a very unfortunate strait, and they don't have the money to deal with this, they're trying to pay everything else off, uh, this is their, their last hope is, is the home that they have, that may not be the best situation, but it's theirs. And we try, we try to recognize that, and try to, to put them in touch with people who could help them, so.
I've, I've heard Renee say, too, that, you know, these homes, they didn't get that way overnight.
Right.
At first, to fix it overnight is, um, a little difficult to do. It took many, many years to get that way.
Any other questions for Renee?
I'd just tell you on the lien situation, that I wish that was a panacea, but it's really not, because what often happens when we tear them down is they're also already delinquent on one or two years of added alarm tax. And I always take the position that our lien is comparable to the county's lien. Ultimately, the county will sell it for taxes, but that person has to file a quiet title lawsuit to get the title, which means they've gotta include us as a defendant. And I've always taken the position, you still owe us, I'm sorry, you bought it from the county, but you still owe us.
Yeah.
Now, there comes a point of diminishing return, if we've got a four hundred dollar lien, and you're gonna pay me eight hundred dollars to go over there and collect it, that's silly.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that.
So, uh.
He sends us bills.
But normally, what's happened is, we've compromised those liens, at least we get something.
Right.
And I don't go spend a lot of time to torture them.
You wash those.
All right, thank you, Renee. Appreciate that. Now we know what we can and can't do, and what to look forward to, and.
So now, council, you may not show at their, show up at their property with a backhoe. I know.
You mean that's, I'm, no.
I was, I was just gonna call Cold Construction.
Yeah, we do frown upon that.
All right. Number four, discussion, uh, discussion regarding agenda items. Um, I have two, please. One is, uh, with the chief, he might as well take the hot seat up front, please, sir. My part was the stuff that we're gonna declare and give to Coyle?
Yes, sir.
It's been sitting there in storage, is it just old for us, and we've already replaced it?
It's old for us, yes, they've already, both items are, or actually, there's more, but the radios and the defibrillators have already been replaced.
Okay, and, and it will work for them?
Yes, they will have to pay some to get the defibrillators reprogrammed to current standards, I think it's a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars.
And they're gonna do that?
But they have agreed to do that. This helps us in the fact that they first respond on medical calls, not only for the town of Coyle, but also Langston and Langston University. They're a mile away, two miles away, you know, we're ten to twelve, so they're getting there faster than us. If it is a cardiac event, they'll have the equipment to, uh, you know, to act upon it and, you know, possibly save somebody's life.
Okay. Uh, and then, the stuff we're buying is refurbished?
Yeah, due to the funds that the federal government gave us in the grant, we're trying to maximize the use of those, to have enough, um, of the monitors to put in all four of our ambulances. And in order to do that, we're having to look at the refurbished models.
That much cheaper, or?
Yeah. New ones about forty grand.
Okay.
Uh, we can get the refurbished ones between twelve and fifteen, and we will have a service contract on those, so in the effect, we do have something go wrong, they'll come and fix it.
They're not off Craigslist.
I wondered if there was a warranty on the refurbished from the factory?
I think there's a one-year on them, and then we're gonna add on a service agreement where they come out and do any maintenance on them, anything that does go wrong in between there, they'll come out and address.
You hope you're not having a heart attack or something, and quits.
Yeah, yeah. That's a huge part.
You run that risk with anything pathological, whether it's new or not.
I have a question on that, uh, the seventy-six thousand dollar grant?
Yes, sir.
Is that a, is that just a hundred percent grant?
Ninety-ten.
Ninety-ten.
Yes, sir. And the, the seventy-six is the amount that we're getting, that's the ninety part. So our share's eighty-eight thousand, I believe, or eighty-eight hundred, I'm sorry.
And they, they will, that, that will.
Heart failure.
The, the amount of money that, that we have will cover the, um, maintenance agreement as well, or is that separate?
That's separate. And we honestly don't know for sure until we bid the project, how much, what we're gonna do is bid one or more.
Okay.
So we'll be able to get as many as we can.
Good, good point. We need to make sure it's in the budget for the services.
Right. Is this fully new equip, uh, equipment, or is it replacing, or?
It's actually something we've never had. Uh, we, we've had defibrillators, which can defibrillate the heart restarted. Um, these are actual cardiac monitors where we can read and interpret the cardiac rhythm, um, record any procedures that we do do, and, uh, also have the ability to run a full twelve E D K G on a person's heart.
What about the wildland firefighting gear?
That's brand new.
Okay.
That's brand new. We've, they've had some in years past in partial bits, but the entire department's never been outfitted.
And, and that must be kinda for the top line areas or?
Well, it could be in town if we had a grass fire, too. Basically, it's a lot thinner, lighter weight, when we're out moving around for four to eight hours at a time, it's a lot cooler and a lot less bulky, because you don't need the.
Because those bunker suits are hot.
That's true, and you don't need the, the protection, because you're not in such close proximity to the, to the radiant heat, if you are in a house fire.
Anything else for the chief?
How many pieces are there of the, uh, wildland fire?
Uh, there's a, a set, a set of boots, a pair of pants, a coat, a helmet, a pair of gloves for each person.
Oh, for all everybody?
Yeah, all twenty-five.
Wow, that's good.
I gotta send two.
Yeah, sorry.
That seems like a pretty good deal.
I'm not counting one.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah. It's about, uh, all included, I think it's around six, seven hundred dollars apiece. A lot better than about twenty-five hundred.
Yeah. Anything else for the chief?
Thank you, chief. Serena did want me to add, we hired our first paramedic, uh, he started, he started on shift yesterday, so, uh, that's the direction we really wanna go with the ambulance service, and we're fortunate.
So the A E Ds now?
As soon as his protocols are signed off by the state, we get these monitors and we get our drugs in.
Awesome, and that's hence the A E Ds and wanting to kinda, of our, but we have now established.
For him to administer any cardiac drugs, we have to have those monitors, so he can watch the rhythm after he gives the drug, to see what it does.
So if y'all come by, his, his name?
Blake Brayton. And he's from, been working at Cashion for a couple of years on their ambulance, and also in Stillwater for Life Net on their ambulance, and, uh, lives, uh, north side of Edmonds, and we're pretty fortunate to grab him.
And we worked yesterday, and he ran hot all day, so they were, they were busy, very, very busy.
Thanks to somebody jinxing.
They think that I jinx the, the department. When I come in, I always say, man, it's such a slow day, and right when I say it, they start running.
Is he likely to do more runs than the average firefighter?
Well, I mean, he's only on shift ten days a month, and I'm, I'm sure he'll come in for some transfers on his days off, but, um, just due to his level, you know, if it's a, an advanced life support level call, he's for sure gonna go, so his workload could be a little greater than the others.
So reality overall, we need some more of those guys, at least a couple of.
My goal is to have at least two per shift in the next five years, but a lot of that depends on the ability to have funding to train the guys, or, uh, being able to hire them in for vacancies.
One per shift would help.
It's great.
That's different right now.
That's the short-term goal.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question on item J. Uh, waiving the fees for landscaping debris for August seventeenth. It's a month and a half away, and we've got trees and limbs down the house, is there a reason for so late, or can we?
We're getting, this is, every once in a while, we try to be real kind to our residents, I know, it's amazing, um, but this is where we're getting a whole bunch of, of phone calls about, I, I know that even our parks department spent all of Monday, uh, cutting trees because high winds, et cetera, and getting limbs. And, and really, this is a, this is in an effort to, to support that socioeconomic level that they're just gonna lay in yards if we don't allow an outlet. Typically, a load, a full truckload runs about twenty-four dollars, um, we have no idea how much we're gonna anticipate. We're gonna advertise it in the water bill on August, but that's probably the only advertisement that we'll really do. This came from, um, just many phone calls about individuals not being able to afford or, or, or do on the limbs. Um, so, we, it's the waiving of the fees for it, we'll advertise it, hope that they do it, and then, uh, Joe out at the, the convenience center keeps a year-long, um, burn permit, and we'll, we'll burn that product. And it can't be construction debris, it can't be bulky trash, it must be yard waste, it must be limbs, it must be, uh, anything from trees, brush, brushes, uh, any brush. So if you drive around town, you'll see a lot of it in yards right now, and our effort is to clean it up.
I had a question, so if this becomes something where people are like, oh, let's get those out there on the curb, I could see this taking more than all day, it could go into the eighteenth, so.
Well, there, this is just to allow them to bring it to the location. There is an effort by the Neighborhood Solutions Group, uh, in, um.
North Cottonwood.
North Cottonwood, they're doing their own cleanup day for their neighborhood, um, and the city, uh, did get a roll-off container donated from Waste Connections. Uh, we will man that with a, a heavy equipment operator, 'cause I've learned on these bulky trash things, somebody throws in a sofa, and then another sofa, and all of a sudden, you've got like a teepee of sofas, and then it's full. Um, so we'll, we'll crush it and get it down, um, and that will provide for that, that neighborhood, and only if you live in that neighborhood are you gonna have access to that bulky trash. So kinda with the thoughts of, of this movement to try to clean up the town, is, is a lot of what we're hearing, we're probably just at an escalated amount of complaints, um, on trash and debris and, and limbs. So this, you know, in my dream world, I would maybe say, next year, let's do the same thing, and do a, it's basically a free limb day, a free yard waste day.
They used to do that, oh, it's probably been quite a few years ago, but we used to have two roll-offs brought out to go for your lake, and we'd just bring your trash and dump it in here, because, you know, I was having to clean up half the countryside when you go out to farm, you're just pushing it in a ditch somewhere, covering it up, or having to haul it yourself, and so.
Most rural trash ends up on the side of the road, and that's also what we're trying to avoid, is the couch dumped in, well, illegally dumped in a commercial dumpster, that's what we're trying to do. Um, a typical roll-off, a twenty-yard roll-off is around seven hundred dollars for.
It was a forty yard.
Or is it, I'm sorry.
It was about seven.
Forty yards, seven hundred dollars, so if people understand, that's, you know, there, there's a significant cost. Um, we are potentially asking the budget for about some, some more dollars for those cleanup efforts, 'cause Waste Connections won't always just donate those to us.
I think I was perceiving the, uh, the mayor mentioning that, uh, that, you know, it's August seventeenth, is there any way to do one in July, that's, if there's such a need now, instead of waiting six weeks?
I mean, I, I, I mean.
Sure, it's up to weaning the fees if.
Why, we chose August, there was a reason.
There was a, um, request from that group.
It was that's handbri.
They, they wanted to do July for the, the bulky waste.
The cleanup of the bulky trash in August.
And on the yard, the following month.
I mean, y'all may have a point, if you, if y'all entertain the idea of, uh, you know, waiving fees one day in July, we can get it, we can't get it in the new, that was it, too, we can't get it in city news.
Okay. We could put on the website, and we'll just see what kind of use there is, and.
Totally up to y'all. I rarely come to y'all to waive fees.
What day is it, on the seventeenth, what day of the week?
It's a Friday.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a Saturday.
You're right.
So you want on a Saturday?
Always on a Saturday, yeah.
So why don't we do mid-month Saturday, or third week in July, something like that, on a Saturday?
You're almost gonna have to do the twentieth now, do you even have room to, time to, this is already.
Fourth of July week.
Right.
Well, until the third week of July.
Right, right.
Right.
The twentieth is Saturday.
The twentieth is also the.
Triathlon.
Triathlon, so we don't wanna, everybody's gonna be trying to, you know, we don't wanna